Imagine I'm starting. All right, I welcome everybody to the Joint City Council Workshop with. Oh, nice to be here to make it right at six AM or PM. Thank you, sir. Good to see you. Kids did a good job on the play.
Thank you.
For your, yeah. Um, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty five at six PM. Call this meeting to order. We will do a flag salute with the flag.
Heather, Heather has a flag on her phone. So are you?
Do the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll just make a note that we're gonna use, uh, planning, or the budget department to purchase a flag holder and a flag. That's funny. It's our guys.
I'll, I'll add that to Glenn's things to do tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause his budget is pretty, he's got a pretty good budget.
Oh, yeah.
All right, uh, roll call. Who's supposed to be here and who's not here?
You want me to do a roll call?
Yeah, let's just do a roll call for people who are supposed to be here and then we go.
Okay, Mayor Kiefer?
Yes.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Yeah.
Counselor Quavis? Counselor Pettigrew?
Yes.
Counselor Prophet? Counselor Rockwell? Counselor Solata? Commissioner Verisi? Commissioner Carbray?
Yeah.
Commissioner Connell?
Here.
Commissioner Irons?
Here.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Layton? Commissioner Tonight?
I know Commissioner, or Rockwell is doing state wrestling tournaments, so I don't hear. So I know, but he didn't tell me he was gone, but I knew he was gonna be gone. All right, let's go to the Transportation System Plan Update. Go right to that.
Sure, so I'll, I'll kick this off and then I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Matt Hugard and, um, uh, Isa and I'll let her introduce herself with her last name in a few moments. I will stumble over it. Um, the reason for this is, uh, the TSP project is funded through a TGM grant. And in the scope of work, there are two of these joint workshops with the Planning Commission and the City Council. Um, this is really an opportunity for staff and the consultant team to kind of answer questions you have generally about the TSP, the TSP update, what we hope to accomplish with this. And then more specifically, we've had two PAC meetings or Public Advisory Committee meetings. Uh, in those meetings, we went through the first three technical memorandums, um, at the first meeting. And then the second meeting, we went through technical memorandum four and five. So at this point in time, we have, uh, had conversations about community or the community profile and trends for the Boardman area. We've done, uh, I shouldn't say we, these two people and their team have done, uh, plans and policy review. Um, they've done some goals, objectives, and evaluation criteria for the project and process. Those were tech memos one, two, and three. And then tech memos four, um, is an existing conditions inventory and analysis. And then, uh, tech memo five was a future conditions analysis and that focuses on a no build environment. So no additional input into the system. So, um, the tonight is really about, again, answering any of those upfront, kind of generic, what is a TSP? I, I, Karen has a lot of history with, with kind of what's been going on, you know, with a lot of these planning documents. But the city hasn't updated many of them in, in about twenty years. So I know most of you don't really have experience with, you know, planning documents or what. I may know that they're there and you may know what they're about, but we haven't gone through this kind of an update process. So I wanna make sure if there's any questions that you have about where we're at, why we're doing this. I, I want you to be able to have a venue where you can ask those questions and we can do our best to answer them. And then specifically, Matt and Isa tonight are gonna take you through these five technical memorandums and let you know kind of what they've said and what they told us so far. And then they're gonna, they're gonna introduce for you the next technical memorandum, which is kind of the alternatives. We're getting, we're kind of now moving from, we've been learning what we know and kind of where we're at. And now we're gonna begin to turn that page and begin to look to where we're going. And so they'll, they will, they will preface that or introduce kind of that next topic for you. So, um, unless you have any questions for me, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt Hugard. I've known Matt for, gosh, Matt, twenty years, maybe?
Twenty-five, probably.
Yeah, uh, Matt's done a lot of transportation work in Eastern Oregon. Um, he is a planning principal, traffic planning principal with, uh, Kittleson and Associates. Um, they are a large firm. They do a lot of work. This is my first time working with Isa. Um, it's been great to get to know her. Um, she seems to be carrying a lot of the balls in the background. Um, they've been keeping the project, um, so far on task and as far as I can tell, on budget. Um, and those are important parts, so. Um, thank you for everybody that's here in the room tonight. And Brenda, thank you for joining, um, from home. And, uh, Matt, I'll just turn it over to you for your, to introduce yourself and the Isa and jump right in. Thank you. I'll let you share your screen for the PowerPoint.
Sure, yeah, I'll share that in a second, but first of all, yeah, just thanks for the introduction, Carla. Again, Matt Hugart with Kittleson. Um, I'm the project manager for, uh, this TSP update. Um, I'll let Isa introduce herself in a second, but let me kind of tell you, it's not just Isa and myself working on this project. There's a couple of other, um, sub consultants working with us. They're not here tonight. Um, uh, and that's MIG, uh, they're a land use planning firm. Um, and they are on the team to help with the development code updates that will ultimately, um, be, um, updated as a result of the TSP project. Um, they also authored, um, one of the, the memo, or part, one and part of another one of the memos that you have in your packet ahead of you tonight, which was the plans and policy review and part of the community profile. Um, we have a third, uh, sub consultant on the team, uh, they're ZAN Associates. Um, and if you participated in the public open house, uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, you probably met Tom and his colleague Sam. Uh, they were helping us, uh, do some public engagement and feedback gathering, uh, that we'll use to inform, uh, this transportation system plan update. So, uh, easily, you wanna give a brief overview of yourself?
Yeah, hi, I'm Isa Gigulis. Um, I'm in our Bend, Oregon office. Um, and I have been doing a lot of the analysis and inventory work on this project. And it's been great to get to know about Boardman.
Okay, well, we have a short sixty-six slide presentation for you tonight. Um, um, and I, I'm serious about that, but we will likely rifle through about forty-five of them. Um, only stopping, um, when you want me to or have particular questions. A lot of those slides represent the maps that we've produced, uh, for this project. Um, and if you're curious or want me to, to go into some details on some of those maps where we have them ready. Otherwise, we'll, we'll try and be a little efficient and maybe even get out of here, um, a little early. So I'm gonna start sharing my screen and someone can give me a verbal cue that you can see it, that would be helpful.
Yep, we can.
Okay. All right, so, um, we kind of broke this thing down into, um, kind of just giving a little bit of background. What is a TSP? Uh, share a little bit about our project schedule. Um, I'll do as deep of an overview of tech memos one through five as you desire. Um, and we'll talk about next steps. So, uh, the first, uh, question, you, if you've never been through this process before, you're probably wondering, what is a transportation system plan and why are we doing it? Well, Carla gave a pretty decent overview, um, uh, but essentially it's a long range planning document. It's adopted as part of your comprehensive plan as the transportation component. And it identifies, um, all of the multimodal transportation network improvements that are needed to support growth in Boardman over the next twenty years. Um, it's typically coordinated with the partnering agencies. Um, and in this case, your main partnering agency is gonna be ODOT, although there's likely to be a little bit of more county coordination, um, involved as well, um, at least from a co-adoption standpoint. As well as maybe some, um, uh, refinements and upgrades to expectations over which county-owned roads, um, might the city want to take over, um, as your city limits expands, um, into the other areas of your urban growth boundary. Um, Carla did a pretty good job of, of the history, but your current TSP, uh, was adopted way back in two thousand and one. So it's past due for a major overhaul. There's been a couple of minor updates and some subsequent sub-area plans that have been adopted and amended to it, but, uh, this would be a complete overhaul of the TSP from top to bottom. And by the way, um, either prompt, raise your hand or just speak up when you have a question. Um, so why are we updating the TSP now? Well, as Carla pointed out, uh, the city applied for and was awarded a transportation growth management grant from Oregon Department of Transportation and the Department of Land Use Conservation and Development. Um, and that grant is paying for the majority of this effort. There's some match, um, that was, um, provided by the city. Um, but, uh, the majority in the bulk of the, the, uh, cost to update this was being supplied by the grant. Um, I think it's no surprise, probably do well in the room, that Boardman's going through a significant population growth at the moment. Uh, there's new residential and commercial infill development. Um, and, uh, the Port of Morrow has always been, continues to expand and increase uh, the number of, of businesses and, um, employer, employers that operate out of that area. Um, and as a result, you probably have seen and noticed, uh, an increase in traffic, um, multimodal traffic and vehicular traffic. So, um, what we're gonna try and do is, is figure out how to address that. Um, and as you'll see later in this presentation, there's some challenges ahead of us. Um, but none of them are so insurmountable that we can't come up with some, some unique ideas to address this. Okay, um, a little bit about our schedule, um, and I kind of cut this out of our project website. Um, we, Carla, um, and company have been helping us, um, update the, uh, project. And so this is a, just a snapshot of a screen from that, um, from that, uh, website, uh, for the TSP. But we are, um, essentially in this third yellow star down here. So we just kind of finished our public involvement and outreach. We've already done our transportation system inventory work. Um, we've assessed and, um, forecast our future traffic conditions. And as you've seen in your packets, we've already done the plan and policy review and basic project framework. So we're just kind of now starting into this fourth star down, which is solution development and evaluation. So what does that look like? Well, that's where we've already identified where you have or likely to have, um, any number of deficiencies on the system. And so this is where we come in and say, hey, um, you might wanna upgrade Main Street, uh, from X to Y or put in a sidewalk here or upgrade an interchange ramp terminal here or there. Um, these will be all the different various, um, ideas that we can come up with to help address the deficiencies um, on the network, or at least existing or projected deficiencies over a twenty. Following that, um, process, which will conclude sometime in late April, um, potentially even May, um, we'll begin the draft of the TSP. Um, and that will go through any number of refinements through coordination with city staff and with our, um, our advisory committees, uh, public engagement and input. And then hopefully all goes well. We'll be back before you, um, sometime in August, I'm sorry, October and November of this year for adoption. So, um, so that's a rough overview of our schedule. We're moving pretty quickly through this process and, um, if for whatever reason, there's some unforeseen delays or some issues come up, we do have a little bit of flexibility, um, with our grant, um, to extend this project out into twenty twenty-six if we have to, um, but we would prefer not to do that, so. Any questions, um, regarding our timeline? Okay. All right, um, like I said, uh, the rest of these, um, slides here are gonna be, um, a quick overview of these, of these documents. Um, I don't really necessarily wanna spend, um, a, a, a ton of time on every one of them, but I'll hit the high points. So, um, that memo number one was what we were calling our community profile and trends memo. It's really just a snapshot, um, a demographic snapshot of some of the characteristics that are important to know when updating the TSP. And I just extracted this table out of the tech memo, so I extracted a handful over these next few slides that I thought you all would find interesting. Um, this is just a table that shows, um, how Boardman has changed over the years, um, from a historical population standpoint to a forecasting standpoint. So we're somewhere, um, between twenty twenty and twenty thirty at the moment. So our current Boardman population within the city, um, somewhere north of about thirty-seven hundred people. Um, and then, um, as we project going forward, including what's in your urban growth boundary, um, at least using the, the, um, uh, the demographic population projections produced by the Portland State University Population Research Center. Um, they're expecting, or, or you can expect a population increase somewhere to, to the tune of about fifty-five hundred people by the year twenty forty-five. So, um, what do we do with all that growth?
Matt?
Um, yeah, sure, hi.
Is it possible to ask a question while you're doing this?
Please do.
Um, so is the Boardman Urban Growth Boundary, the City of Boardman, and Morrow County all using the same people? Or is that in addition to? So is it thirty-five hundred people plus Morrow County at twelve thousand one hundred? Or is there, is that thirty-five hundred a part of the Morrow County number?
Yeah, good question. So the, the City of Boardman number here, that if you can see my cursor, um, thirty-five hundred twenty-nine, that's what's in your city limits, um, in twenty twenty, according to, um, the PSU, um, data that we extracted this from. Um, within the, you'll see the Boardman UGB number is, is about six hundred people higher. Um, and that's basically a reflection of what's in it, that's what's in the UGB. So you can think of forty-one sixty as including that thirty-five twenty-nine, but plus the additional six hundred. And then the Morrow County population includes all of, includes all of the Boardman UGB and everything else in the county, um, not in the Boardman UGB.
So, so Matt, I'm just gonna add a little, a little piece here for everybody in the room. After this tech memo was completed, we did get the, the announcement from PSU that, um, thanks to work, um, that Stephanie had actually done when she was still at the county, um, we had to identify an undercount in twenty twenty. They had not counted the Portview Apartments. So our new estimate for this year, well, for twenty twenty-four is four thousand seven hundred and twenty-five for the city. So again, this tech memo was done when that information came in. Um, but that, that number that, that Matt was saying, there's a number between twenty twenty and twenty thirty. They have amended the twenty twenty number. It's higher than that now. I don't remember what they changed the twenty twenty number to, but it has affected our forecast number for twenty twenty-four. And that twenty-four forecast number for Boardman, not the UGB or the camp, I mean, those would go up too, because they would all go up, uh, accordingly. Um, but that number for Boardman today is forty-seven twenty-five. They, um, Stephanie and Stephen have done some additional work and they provided some additional information to PSU's PRC. And we should see, we, there's potentially some additional changes. There was Tuscany, um, some manufactured homes. There were some, they, they, they looked at North County, so they also identified some numbers, um, in Oregon and in the county as well. So we should see all of those numbers continue to go up. I just wanted to share that with you. If you're looking at that number going, I know there's more people that live in Boardman than that. You're right, there are.
So Carla, thank you.
Letting me interrupt, Matt.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. It sounds like we might, at least for the sake of, of continuity, wanna go back and make some changes to, um, this table that's in their respective memo. I, for, for everyone on the, in the room there, um, most of this was done way back in September of twenty twenty-four. So it's been about five months since it was last touched. And if what Carla's saying is, is indeed the, the, the current population, we'll, we'll probably wanna go back and make those changes, so. Okay.
Well, question, the, for our fellow business, and.
So, okay, there's some further refinement we're gonna keep working on. So we'll get you where we are, Matt, and then just caveat, could change some more. But I think if we get to where we currently are, that's probably a good place to be.
We're also working with PSU to maybe even do a more in-depth approach to give us a stronger foundation, which would be more possible door-to-door, so.
Right, where we may be doing a door-to-door as well. And because the other thing we're pushing back with PSU on is their family size for Boardman. Well, it's a little larger than the average family size for the state. We still don't believe with a seventy percent minority, majority population that it's truly reflective of family size for the City of Boardman, so.
Okay. All right, um, let me just share a few other tables here. I don't, even though these numbers, uh, the total numbers, um, probably are changing, I, I don't think these percentages, um, to cha-change too much. So this is, um, just a breakdown of the populations in Boardman and the Boardman UGB in Morrow County, um, according to a number of kind of key demographic groups. So, um, the first one is sixty-five years and no older, non-majority white, uh, limited English proficiency, below two hundred percent private poverty, uh, disability and, um, percentage that have internet access. Um, so you might see some surprising numbers on here. Um, things that stood out to me are your internet access, um, capacity for your population, so at less than twenty percent. Um, I think one of the things we've recognized in that is we can't rely upon virtual outreach, um, to try and reach the majority of the population, um, in Boardman for input into this TSP. And as such, which is why I think you saw, if you're, um, part of the open house, um, and other engagement efforts we performed a couple of weeks ago, those were done on the ground, um, trying to go out to people where they gather and where they meet to get that input. Um, other things that stand out are the below two hundred percent poverty level and the limited English proficiency. Um, probably not surprising, um, to you all in the room, but, uh, certainly has a input and a factor on how we, um, per, produce the TSP update, um, uh, for, for the population. Any questions on this one?
No, but I'd make a comment on that internet access, because I think that's low in Boardman. I think there's more than eighteen percent of us that have internet access in Boardman. Since we went around town and gave everybody internet access.
I, I wouldn't disagree, Karen. My guess is the demographics that they're pulling from have enough date to them. In other words, they're not current enough, they're not picking up the efforts that have happened with PDT passed.
Well, and you can see up there, we're Boardman at five percent for sixty-five-year-old. That will not support assisted living. I mean, that's a really bad figure for us, uh, for, for me.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, um, last one, uh, these are, bear with me on these. Um, th- these are kind of hard to read. There's, there's a lot of numbers on here. But, um, what this is saying is, this is the table that shows the percentage of Boardman residents who are employed in the selected city. So in other words, it's looking at, at the, the data that says, all right, if you are a Boardman resident, where are, where is the physical location of your employment? Um, and so if you look over the years, starting, going back to twenty seventeen and up to twenty twenty-one, the most recent year the data was updated and available, there's been a steady increase, um, in the percentage of Boardman residents who are able to find employment, um, in Boardman. Um, or who are at least seeking employment in Boardman. So why is that important? Well, it's showing that less of your population is leaving town to go to work in places like Hermiston or other locations. And, um, they are staying. And so what does that mean? Well, that's less commuting miles on your roadways, um, or particularly maybe on I eighty-four and, um, less of a sort of an exhale and inhale of that population. Now, um, you, you can debate that, um, um, as to the accuracy. This is pulling from the LEHD origin, destination, employment statistics done by the census. Um, but I think it's important to kind of see how that trend is changing over time. Um, I'll share the next slide, which will probably be even more interesting, is this one is the percentage of the Boardman workforce residing in the selected city. So then again, this is looking at the workforce in Boardman and where does that workforce live? And so for our perspective, um, we look at Boardman and you, again, you can see this number is sort of oscillating a little bit, but by the year of twenty twenty-one, it's gone up almost five percent, which basically means that, um, you're keeping more of your workforce in town. Um, and, or you're having a greater percentage of employment, or, or, sorry, residents who are able to work in the city, so. Um, so those are, I think, just a little bit of, of commuting or, or commuting statistics that we look at when trying to get a handle on, um, where the, the population is coming and going from when it seeks employment, um, inside and outside the city. Okay, um, so, uh, that's, there's a lot more in tech memo number one, and you're welcome to ask questions if you have any. Um, but I'll just kind of keep moving on if, if there are none to tech memo number two. And I'm gonna spend very little time here, because I, I recognize this is a very long wordy document, um, but it's kind of necessary to kind of kick these TSPs off. Essentially, our colleagues at MIG went through all of your adopted plans and policies, such as your development code, your comprehensive plan, your zoning, um, um, portions of those documents. Anything that has any relevance to the TSP and did a thorough sort of overview and review of those documents, um, for the sake of pulling out the things that are critical for updating the TSP. So it outlines the policy and regulatory framework for transportation planning. It reviews those, um, policies and regulations and determines what's applicable at the state, county, and local levels and identifies, um, projects or needs to inform the planning effort. So, um, it's a, it's kind of a thick and dense document. I wouldn't recommend reading it unless you, um, are suffering from insomnia and, uh, need, need something to help fall asleep. But, um, I think from a key takeaway perspective, it's important to do, because it ensures consistency, um, as we go through this process with statewide policies. So the State of Oregon has any number of, of requirements, um, from a planning perspective that you, the City of Boardman is required to meet. So it, it, it itemizes those out and identifies, um, what is important, uh, for the city to focus on. Um, it builds on recent and ongoing planning efforts and integrates the TSP with other local plans. And then lastly, it considers code amendments to ensure consistency with our TSP objectives and outcomes. Okay, uh, I'm assuming there are no questions on that, but I will pause and, and let, let it, someone raise their hand if they have one.
Matt, I'll just share for the, for the benefit of the folks in the room, that the urban renewal plans were part of that review. So those project lists in the urban renewal plans will be captured moving forward to the TSP as well. Not that we haven't been working to get those in the CIP, but they will be also captured in the TSP.
Okay, um, this one, I think we might generate a little discussion on tonight. Uh, so one of the first things we did as a, as a, um, um, technical expert for the city, um, is try and come up with some goals and objectives to help inform this TSP update. Now, predicate that with the statement that we are not Boardman residents, as you all know. Um, while I spent a lot of time in Boardman over the years, um, I'm still not an expert on what Boardman thinks and feels, um, are the, um, main goals, uh, for its community going forward. So we took a crack at it, uh, we shared that with city staff, uh, we shared it with our, um, planning advisory committee and also got some feedback from the public, um, at the open house on how well are these objectives, um, really reflecting the needs and the desires of the city? So, um, I'll, I'll, I have a slide here that kind of highlights those, but there's six identified goals. Um, the first goal is safety. Uh, the second goal is mobility. Uh, the third goal is what we call accessibility and connectivity. Uh, community and equity, sustainability and strategic investment. So I'll go into these goals here in a little detail and, and again, stop me or let's, let's, um, raise your hand and we can, we can go into these, um, in greater detail or debate the wording of, of some of these. Um, oops, what happened? Did we get rid of these? Um, these are the, are the, at the end?
They are at the end, yeah.
Okay, sorry, um, let me give you a sneak preview of all these other slides here.
Oh, I got the top.
Right there, okay, thank you.
That's the evaluation criteria for each goal and then, yeah, doesn't mean.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, um, what does the safety goal look like? Well, it currently reads, improve the safety and comfort of the multimodal transportation network. Um, so what does that mean in an application standpoint is, you know, if there are Um, so what does that mean in an application standpoint is, you know, if there are intersections or roadways that are deemed unsafe for whatever reason through our analysis. Um, we certainly would want to prioritize to the extent possible, solutions that would address those safety challenges. Um, so pretty straightforward, um, but we are kind of purposeful with our wording and um, to use the word multimodal, um, because it's not just about roadways, but making sure that our sidewalks, bike lanes and multi-use trails and crossings at intersections are also given uh credence in this process. Um, goal number two is about mobility. Um, so that reads provide an efficient multimodal transportation system. So um, in other words, translating that is we want to make easier for people to get around the city. Um, but not just in their vehicles um through biking and walking and recreating. Um, so um, that's the mobility goal. Uh, goal number three is accessibility and connectivity. It's by that, I mean, provide an interconnected multimodal transportation network that connects all members of the, of the commu-community key destinations. So I think the key word here is interconnected. Um, it's, it's why you might be asking, well, how's that different from mobility? So I think the connectivity is improving travel choices for people. So if there's only one way to get from A to B, um, and that one way is fairly inefficient um for one or more modes, um, we would look for opportunities to make and look and find alternate, alternate travel modes or travel paths uh for that mode. So um, it could be on the, as a, an example, it could be um extending Olson Road um further east and west um, in order to provide an alternative to Wilson as a travel choice. Um, so that's kind of what the accessibility connectivity goal is about is improving um travel choices and routes um for all modes of travel. Um, those are the first three goals. Let me pause here and see if anybody has any questions.
Keep going, man.
Okay, um, so the other three goals, the fourth one of its community and equity. Um, so that reads provide an equitable multimodal transportation system for all users to promote a livable and fully connected community. So I think we heard from any number of people that, so we want to make sure that uh if there are neighborhoods that have been underserved from an infrastructure standpoint, um, that we probably should be striving and prioritizing um, uh, opportunities or projects that would better connect those neighborhoods to the larger transportation network. Um, I think that's how we're looking at the term equity. I know equity is not the most um, um, uh, popular um, uh, word these days. Um, but I think we're trying to look at it more from the perspective of of reaching neighborhoods and underserved neighborhoods and helping to prioritize those neighborhoods um over other better connected neighborhoods. Um, so I think that's how we're trying to use and, and define the word equity in this case. Um, goal number five is sustainability. Provide a sustainable transportation system by promoting transportation choices and preserving environmental resources. I think I translate that more on the grounds um of, okay, if we're going to extend Olson Road, for example, to the east to ultimately connect to Laurel Lane. Um, it's not that we don't want to extend it, but we don't want to extend it on an alignment that would um, you know, uh, impact wetlands, define wetlands or other environmentally sensitive um, areas. So um, how can we do it in a way that avoids those um, and avoids the added costs and impacts of, of those kind of a- alignment scenarios? So um, there's a lot of other kind of examples you can throw at sustainability, but I think it was important to at least recognize that we want to make smart choices with how we improve the transportation system. And I think, you know, generally speaking, you would have to have done that anyways. It's just beneficial to state it outright. And then last one is strategic investment. So make the most of the transportation resources by leveraging available funding opportunities, preserve existing infrastructure and reduce system maintenance costs. Um, so probably don't have to read too deeply into this one, but I think we've recognized that the amount of money um, that most jurisdictions have at the end of the T S P is a fraction of the cost of the projects that we ultimately end up selecting or identifying or prioritizing. So let's be mindful of that. Um, certainly we'd love three new interchanges in Boardman, but the reality is you're probably not going to be able to afford to build those interchanges. Um, so how can we make our existing interchanges more efficient? How can we tweak them in ways to eke out as much capacity as possible and make them operate better over the long run without the added costs of major infrastructure? So um, that's all mouthful. Um, but is anybody just kind of going around the room? Anybody kind of want to disagree with this wording or challenge the the um, the goals as they're written? They're not set in stone at this point. Uh, these are just working goals. Like I said, we haven't really moved into the project selection standpoint. So this is a very opportunistic time to go back in wordsmith or adjust or add goals if, if you feel worthy. So, so yeah, I'll pause and see if anybody has any questions.
We're talking in group in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I read this. Didn't, I don't know, you sent it out to us, so I had read it. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, as staff, we, we, I should say I reviewed this. Um, I think Rolf probably did earlier, but we've lost his ability to provide input. Um, Mike has begged off. He said he's going to read the, the final draft of the T S P and I can't blame him. He's pretty busy. Um, it's all pretty standard T S P stuff. Again, these are not just, they're not set in stone. So as we define projects and we move forward in this next phase, if we find that something's not fitting, we're not, we're not adopting tonight. So we can continue to fine tune this. Um, but again, these are kind of, and these are really, when you think about the T S P, these are those thirty thousand foot kind of goals and objectives. So, um.
Yeah, okay. Well, um, you know, something pops up and you want to come back and look at these later, um, we can. Um, I, I think as we move forward, the deeper we go into the rest of the portions of the T S P, um, the more important it's going to be to solidify these going forward. So if there is a you know, a, a change in focus or a desire to make these um word, worded differently or add or subtract goals, um, sooner the better on that. Otherwise, we're going to start using those to evaluate and prioritize the selection of, of projects going forward, so.
And, and if it, the, for those of you that are here, if you, if you want to get into any of these a little deeper, clearly your packet tonight, all three hundred and sixty-two pages of it. Um, you know, I can't, I can't encourage you to read a lot of the appendices and the, the, I mean, the devil is in those details for us. Planning and, and transportation nerds. Um, but for you all, I, you know, I think that the, the, the kind of the intro, the, to each of the tech memos is important. If you don't want to try to get into the packet, if that's a little overwhelming, you can go to, you know, the city's website and go to where it says commu-community and pick the strategic plan. You can go down into the T S P. And the, the fi-, I'm going to put quote marks around it, the final tech memos for one, two, and three are there under the first meeting. And then the draft for five memos are there. And again, I'm putting air quotes around that. Nothing is final until this is adopted. Um, tech memos four and five are there. So again, they're there. Um, you know, if you've got questions, um, don't hesitate to reach out and ask. That's, I'm, I'm your resource on this. So if you've got questions, do ask.
Okay, um, I've, while Carla was talking, I teed up our uh tech memo number four. Uh, so this was our existing conditions inventory and analysis. Um, we've um we've shared the content of this memo with staff um and presented the, this information to our advisory committee um, as well as our partners at ODOT. Um, I was just informed by ODOT uh in an email yesterday that they're still reviewing tech memos four and five. So um, kind of implied that they had some comments, um, some things that they would like to um, us, to us to address. So this presentation about, is about what's in there at the moment, uh, not about uh, what we have done since uh we last presented it to them. But from an inventory perspective, we're required um by the state to inventory things such as um, identification of who owns the roads in Boardman. Is it Boardman? Is it Moreau County? Is it the Port of Moreau? Is it ODOT? So we've done our best to try and itemize those. I think we're still working with Carla and her staff to get to the bottom of a couple of, of roadway segments that we're still just not quite sure who owns or maintains, uh, whether it's uh the um uh, the Corps of Engineers up near the, the Marina Park. Um, or whether it's Port of Moreau, or whether it's, it's the Boardman, um, they're still working on some of that. So this is still work in progress, but it's all based on what we know today. Um, we have identified the roadway classifications, the pavement conditions, um, some more detailed things like travel lanes, posted speeds, bridge ownership and sufficiency ratings. Uh, where do we have bicycle facilities? Where do we have sidewalk facilities? Um, what are our, what's our public transit inventory look like? Um, where do we have freight and railroad facilities? And more importantly, where do we have sort of limitations on those facilities? Um, and um, then what are sort of the, what's the outcome of all that inventory? How's it operate? Um, is it meeting our adopted standards? Is it not meeting our standards? And um, and if it's not, you know, why? So um, that was all inventoried in the existing conditions memo. Um, I, I'm I don't have the slides teed up here, but I, as you saw, I have all of the maps that um, we had uh generated in our existing conditions memo. If you have a particular map you'd like to look at or discuss, I can um, zip forward down in the presentation to find it. Um, but I didn't want to bore you with twenty-seven maps um, uh, to look at, uh, if you, if you didn't have any questions.
So Matt, these are the same maps that were at the open house, correct? Many of them?
Yep.
So all of the city councils, as I recall, were at the open house, or maybe there was one who wasn't. And many of our planning commissioners were at the open house. I'm just looking in the room and I remember, I know Jamie was there and uh others. So I, I don't know that we need to get into this, into these details unless there's a lingering question from the open house. I'm not seeing, yeah, I think we can move forward.
Okay, yeah, just sort of giving you a sneak preview of what's in there if you haven't seen them yet. Um, but
At the end.
At the beginning.
The beginning.
Well, and I take that back. I'm looking for wrong. Yeah, it's thirty-five. I was looking for the wrong squad.
Yeah, so you might find some inaccuracies or things you believe to be incorrect, and you're probably correct. Um, a- as I said, these maps are, are present as of our last P A C. We did get in, in a handful of comments about those and some debate is still going on as to how to formally um rectify some of these unknowns. So um, again, these maps on the screen here and in your packet um, are gonna be updated um as, as soon as we get to the bottom of some of these ownership questions that are still lingering. Hey Carla, any updates on any of that while we're on the subject?
No, I can tell you that we have been talking to the ports at staff level about Marine Drive. I think we've made an initial determination of where the, the where, where our portion is and where the ports portion is. And we've agreed that we probably need to do joint resolutions to solidify that. So I, I've just wrote that down on my pad here to get back to doing that work. Um, and there's a speed limit change that happened on Marine Drive too. So we'll update you on where those speed limits are.
Yep, okay. Um, I guess, uh, I, I know you, you didn't have any questions, but let me bring up a couple of figures in here. Um, what you're looking at here just is probably Greek uh to most people, uh, except traffic engineers, but um these are, these circles represent all of the intersections in the city. The leftmost panel is um traffic conditions during the weekday A M peak hour, uh, so roughly in that seven to eight-ish time period. And then the panel on the right, uh, figure seventeen shows the uh traffic conditions during the uh weekday P M peak hour. So roughly in that four to five-ish time period, um, the exact hour, I can't call off the top of my head, but it's late afternoon or evening. Um, where you see the red um circles around the numbers, th- those are intersections where, as we performed that existing conditions assessment, those are intersections where we found the operations to be um, um, operating poorly. Um, so which are those intersections? Well, you can probably guess, but it's Boardman and Ma- or Main Street and Boardman Avenue. Um, Main Street and Front Avenue, North Front Avenue, that is, and Main Street and South Front Avenue. Um, all three of those intersections do, I think primarily to the traffic generated by the high school. Um, um, don't operate very well in the morning. You probably have experienced that yourself. So what is, what do we, what I mean by don't operate very well? Well, probably sit through those intersections if you're trying to make a left turn uh longer than you would at other locations in town. And so um, you get these level of service, D and E um, grades that go with that. And um, your current standards in the city are based on level of service. So those at three intersections in the morning um have operational challenges. And then if I go to the panel on the right, um, you see a couple of other intersections popping up. Um, those include uh Main Street and Front, North Front Street. Uh, again, on the north side, um, the I eighty-four westbound ramp terminal and the uh Main Street and South Front Street. So um, those three intersections again are having um operational um delay challenges associated with them. And I'm sure it's of no surprise to anyone in the room. That's important to know, um, because when we get into the forecast projection work, um that's only going to get worse. So um, sneak preview. Okay, um, any other questions or I'll move on to future conditions?
Well, I'm going to ask Carla. Uh, so now that we know that we're going to have more development over here on the south side going west. Are we, we must be figuring that in here somewhere.
Yes.
I mean, his little round dots was.
Yes, yes. We, we know that, we know that the Burger King is going to have an impact on, on South Front.
Well, in, I don't know, in some of this that I read today or someday this week, it said fast, fast out, something about like if you had a drive-in and then some of them were called speed out or fast out or something.
Hi.
And so I didn't know if that was really like, like if you phoned in your order and you, I mean, you really, you know, and it was really quick to get in and out.
Yeah.
So that was really a problem with some of this new development over here, is that it might you know, there's no, they're not going to be waiting. I mean, it's going to be a
Yeah, so, so wa- as people have been um talking to us about development, particularly in the southwest quadrant of the interchange, we've been putting the Main Street I M P in front of them and saying, here, this is what we have to accomplish. So hence, as you all know, we're doing South Main Street. And when we do South Main Street, we're doing the, the West Loop. So we're, we're trying to build to the I M P to begin to address that circulation piece. I think what you'll find is, I'll talk shortly and pass it to Matt, because when he gets into tech memo five, we begin to talk about what happens with the no build scenario, which is going to further drive the next body of work is, okay, we know it's going to be a cluster. What are we going to do about it? Okay?
Okay. Um, okay, well, yeah, Carla just set this up. Um, so the next memo is about future conditions. Um, and more importantly, what we define this to be is future no build condition. So if we just let growth in Boardman run rampant, um, or how we can expect it to happen um over a twenty-year period, and we don't make any improvements to the system um, beyond what's out there today or beyond what's reasonably likely to happen in a couple of years based on other development, known developments or funded projects. Um, wh- what does the system look like? And it's probably of no surprise that things just get worse. Um, so how much worse? So, well, first of all, how do we, how do we accomplish this forecasting? So if we were in a larger um, part of Oregon, um, we would get the benefit of using one of ODOT's travel demand models. These are computer models that they use and they generate to help forecast the impacts of traffic growth on the system. Um, Boardman is of a size that uh they don't have a model um for Boardman. And so we had to kind of generate our own model. Um, now we didn't use the com- the complex computer modeling that, that they use to generate these other regional travel demand models, but we did sort of a poor man's version of one. Um, where uh we, we basically guessed, um, to use a technical term. And um, we did our best to, to assess where we think that, that best guess of development traffic would uh go on the city's system. So what does that look like? Um, well, first of all, we took maps like this, um, where, you know, we, we know we've got large undeveloped parcels. Of lands in the city. Um, we worked closely with Carla and her staff, and we said, hey Carla, uh, wh- what do you think about this parcel here? It's zoned highway commercial, um, which can accommodate anything from motels to restaurants to fast food and the like. Um, what are you hearing, um, based on y- your role as a planner in the city? Um, you know, who are the people who are coming in, in interested in those parcels and developing those parcels? So, um, we, we did some, um, investigative work on the sides of these parcels. We conversed with staff. And put our best guess forward as what we think that development might look like. Now, we might have guessed motel on one of these parcels, and in two years, it might be a fast food. Um, so, uh, you gotta take this with a little bit of, of, of rope here. But the, the effort is really just trying to, um, assess what does the zoning allow for that parcel? And what is a reasonable proxy land use to assume for traffic growth over time? Assuming that most of these undeveloped parcels will have something on them within a twenty-year period. Um, so we kind of rinsed and repeated that throughout the city, um, but we also. Put some regulation or regulators on the process. Now, there's a lot of parcels in the city that could develop, but may or may not. Or, or are not reasonably likely to develop, and Carla and her staff were helpful in kind of pointing those out. So it's, you know, those large parcels where the landowner has been farming for decades and unlikely to ever sell out. Um, from, to the development community. So we didn't touch those parcels, but we certainly looked and, and, and formulated a guess for most of the other parcels in town. Um, so here's a, just a snapshot of the zoning map and how we use that. So here's a, here's a good sort of guestimate. So we know, for example, at the, um, west end of West Front Street, there's a future motel. Um, that will be, uh, constructed out there. So we've got a sixty-room motel assumed for that parcel. Uh, for parcel number two, which is just, um, um, west, uh, or sorry, east of the C and D, uh, kind of behind it. Um, we assumed a fast food restaurant, just as a guess. Um, doesn't mean, um, it's gonna be a fast food restaurant, it's just a proxy use. And then for parcel number three, we assumed, uh, another fast food restaurant, um, some multi-expansion of multifamily residential. And, um, conversion of the park to a motel. Um, so these, these guestimates, um, can be expected to generate a certain amount of traffic. Um, and we then sort of assessed, where do you, where do we think that traffic's gonna go? So, for example, your fast food restaurant, I would venture to guess that probably seventy-five percent, if not more, of its trips. Are coming on and off the freeway system. Um, as sort of travelers passing by, um, looking for, for food. Um, the other twenty-five percent or so, um, probably are generated by the residents of Boardman. So you, as you can imagine, the traffic loading for that development, um, looks a lot different, um, depending upon the use. So factoring all that in, um, we, we kind of did this back-of-the-napkin computer model of, of. Of, uh, traffic projections in town and then modeled that, that input, um, over time. So, um, this is a table that shows the number of trips we can expect on a daily or peak hour basis. Don't try and memorize any of this, it is in your packet. Um, but that's kind of the number of trips that we're estimating and forecasting. Ultimately, we kind of come to a pretty conservative estimate of traffic projections in town. Um, which is maybe another way of saying, I think we captured. Probably a pretty reasonable and probably overly conservative assumption of growth, but that's good. Um, because when we overestimate growth, then we've project our improvement needs. Um, to accommodate that, and we don't end up with a scenario where we're, you know, under, under-planning our network. Um, for, um, higher potential growth if it occurs. Um, I'm gonna just hit a few more slides and I'll pause. Um, we do recognize, however, from a no-build perspective, that there are a handful of projects. In town that we can rely upon to be built, um, in the no-build scenario, and so we work closely with Carla. And Mike, uh, to kind of figure out what those projects might look like. So, O- Oregon Trail Boulevard, um, is, um, shown as reasonably likely to be built sometime in the next few years. Uh, extending from Main Street out to, uh, Baylor. Um, and then, um, some assumption of baggage roads and the collection and the completion of a network. That would connect, um, kind of the west end of South Front Street back to that future extension of Oregon Trail Boulevard. So, um, little projects like that, um, that have a bearing on how we projected that demand. These were assumed when we, um, forecast the growth in, in the city over time. Um, here's just a, a quick overview of all the parcels that we had targeted, um, through this effort. Um, so if you look at the panel on the right, all the, um, boxes in red represent an assumption of some level of. Future development, be it residential, commercial, um, shopping, fast food, you name it. Um, those are all the parcels that, that we assumed through this process to be developed over a twenty-year period. Anything else that's not circled, um, it was. We were encouraged not to assume growth on that based on current use of that parcel and the likely, the like, the. Unlikeliness for those parcels to ever develop within that time period. Any, uh, questions on this?
I, I would just say that, well, those are the ones we selected. That doesn't mean that development can't happen elsewhere. And it also doesn't mean that we're not gonna work with those other landowners to say, hey, you know, like Dan McCarty's, the, the fields that are out there. That are just perpetually in the middle of Boardman. Eventually, we're gonna have to have a conversation with Mr. McCarty about. Once Chaperone Phase Two is built with sixty-five homes, we don't have any, uh, we, there are no more large tracks for residential development. So unless we move a Mr. McCarty to do that. We are gonna have a, a limitation to how Boardman is gonna continue to grow on that front. So just because they're not identifying, doesn't mean that work is not gonna happen or continue. Um, but this was, we, this exercise is kind of your, your best guess with what you know today.
Yeah, and I, I'd say it's, um, probably from a housing perspective, it's more than enough housing to accommodate the. Growth population numbers that we had shared at the early part of the, of the presentation. Even if those numbers are going up by several hundred, um, units or several hundred, um, people. More than what we had previously shown. Um, I think we've got, I don't know, Isa, if you can remember off the top of your head, but I think we had assumed something to the order of. Um, five hundred to a thousand additional housing units through this effort, if I recall.
And, and I would also add that there are projects that are kind of dancing in the background, that, you know, we're talking to landowners. We're talking to developers, but there, there, at the point we generated this, there was nothing solid enough to say, I think something's gonna happen here. Today, I might circle one or two other pieces, and by the time this is adopted, I probably certainly would circle one or two other pieces. But at the time we had to make this decision, this was what was reasonable.
And it's not to say we couldn't modify any of this going forward if something changed, um, substant- substantively. Okay, um, so, um. This map, again, just all these stars on this map shows all the intersections that we were very purposeful in inventorying and studying. How they're gonna perform, both currently and in the future. Um, so this is just a, a quick snapshot. So most of our intersections are up and down the Main Street corridor. Um, and we've got all of the Laurel Lane interchange, um, intersections included as well. Oh, and I, I'll say one more thing, um, going back to this map, is you, you, you see that we're suspiciously not showing any red. Um, dots on the Port Amaro. It's not that we're, um, not including, um, expected growth from the port. They were just excluded from this exercise because we've already gone through a similar effort a few years ago when we updated the. Um, the Laurel Lane Interchange Area Management Plan. So we've already forecast and projected. Most of the ports, um, growth on their land through that effort. So that's just been assimilated into this process, and I didn't try and incorporate and mess up, uh, this map with all those additional projects. Because most of them are off this map and further out into the larger, um, more rural segments of the port. Okay, um, so here's that same old intersection bubble diagram we showed earlier. Um, and as you can see, there's a lot more red, um, popping up on this map. Um, so I think the big takeaways here is, under today's conditions, while we're showing red. It's red because you're not meeting level of service. Um, in the future, most of these, these are red because w- we expect operational failure. At these intersections. In other words, the amount of traffic that would be generated by all this future development is essentially gonna overwhelm. Almost every intersection you see in red here, to the point where it's just not gonna have capacity anymore. Um, so it's, but that, I'll, I'll stipulate that is it's not gonna have capacity, but it doesn't mean. That it's not mitigatable. So, in other words, almost all of your intersections in town are just stock control intersections. You don't really have any signalized intersections or any other, uh, enhanced traffic control. Um, a lot of the red you see on this map can be resolved with some better traffic control. Some of it's gonna need capacity enhancements, lane widening, additional travel lanes. Um, but a lot of it is solvable with better traffic control, and just quite frankly, you're reaching a point in your growth. Where, um, you know, things like traffic signals and roundabouts and other things are gonna be part of the future going forward. This project and the efforts going forward will help identify and solidify what the best projects are for solving some of these traffic. Uh, capacity and level of service deficiencies that we're noting here. Um, I will point out, um, just a few more things here. I'm gonna go back to a map. Um, in fact, I'm just gonna bring over another map here. And just use a good old Google Earth. Um. One of the things that's not really pulled out of those bubble maps is, as you can see, I'm zooming in here on our favorite, uh, interchange. Um, in town, the Main Street interchange and, um, probably comes as no surprise to anybody that those ramp terminals don't operate well today. And they're certainly not gonna operate well in the future. You got a single, uh, two-lane bridge over, uh, the freeway. And, um, nineteen-sixties-era interchange ramps, um, at the Main Street, uh, overpass. Um, the amount of growth that we're projecting, um, kind of in my mind indicates that this is, isn't going to be adequate. Um, for Boardman, and, um, ODOT is a part of this project, and they're part of the committee. Um, and they're actively reviewing, um, all of the analysis that we're putting forward. I haven't seen their comments yet. But, um, I do suspect that they're gonna have their eyes opened a little bit when it comes to what we're showing, um, at these ramp terminals. And, um, I think it's reasonably likely that as we go through this TSP. Um, there's gonna need to be some really serious conversations with ODOT about how to improve this interchange. Um, uh, not to get too hard, far ahead of ourselves, but I think improvements at these interchange look like a couple of things. Um, first of all, single-lane ramps coming off that freeway probably need, um, widening of these ramps to produce left and right turn lanes. Um, at both the eastbound and westbound, um, terminals. Um, I, I think minus some other way of, of traversing a barrier created by I eighty-four. There probably needs to be a widening of this overpass to a three-lane, um, overpass so that you can make left turns. On and off these, uh, ramp terminals, um, without impeding the vehicles behind you. So, um, widening to a three-lane is, is very likely in the future. Um, as well as potentially, um, traffic control, um, improvements at the terminals themselves. Now that, um, while that on itself probably would be enough to address the long-term capacity. As you can imagine, um, ODOT and the city probably don't have the money to make what could be anywhere from a. Twenty to fifty million dollar improvement at that interchange. So what can the city potentially consider going forward? And as part of what we'll be looking at is, are there ways to make alternate, alternative connections across, um, I eighty-four? Um, like, for example, could we extend Olson, um, under or over the freeway? Um, I'm not talking about, uh, an interchange at Olson, but at least providing an alternative, um, connection to get from the north side to the south side. That doesn't rely on Main Street. Um, that in and of itself, um, probably can alleviate the need to do a full upgrade. And widening of this interchange, but that's not cheap in and of itself. So, um, I'm just kind of throwing these things out there because I think that's the reality of what we've found so far is. The amount of growth that you are likely or reasonably likely to experience over a twenty-year period, the amount of trips that that growth is gonna generate. And the fact that I eighty-four is really a dividing, um, barrier to, um, to serving that community. Funnels all of your trips currently, uh, mostly through Main Street. Um, Main Street in and of itself, and those interchange ramps just don't have the capacity to accommodate that growth over time. Particularly when you've got major land uses on the north side of town, like the high school, um, community center, employment at the Port Amaro. Um, generated by most of the residential growth occurring on the south side. So you don't have to do the math, um, too deeply to find and anticipate, um, those deficiencies are popping up.
You know, uh, if we were going to plan ahead then, when we do northeast Front Street. We would make that a three-lane street.
Very likely. I mean, that's. Yeah.
That really needs to be part of the conversation because. Unless money is generated out of the sky that we're not anticipating in twenty years. That overpass at Olson is the most likely, probably.
Solution.
Yes, that's the word. So if you dump more traffic on that, and then you come down to a crappy.
Little Front Street, it's two lanes. You haven't really solved anything, or you just created another problem.
And if we're gonna, we know we're gonna do something with Front Street, and there's plenty of width there.
Yeah.
I mean, so it wouldn't be like. So, anyway.
Yeah, no, worth it, we're thinking about, yeah, we're starting designing a year, so, yeah. Uh, my concern about overpass at Olson is the built environment and how we get there.
Yes.
You know, we put it, City and County both put the TSP in their respective TSPs twenty years ago, and we did nothing to protect the opportunity. So being able to get there now is gonna be difficult, but it's worth the conversation to identify. Is it a possibility? Cause with the Sage Center expansion and then on the south, on the north side and the, and the data center on the south side. You know, there's just, uh, yeah, and that picture is two thousand and nine would be my bet.
It's a little old. Um, I'm sure there's a better one. I don't know why, um, Google Street View is.
Yeah. Updated other parts of Boardman, but they've not updated, um, Olson in Street View.
Yeah, well, here you go, it's a better look from the freeway, so, um, yeah, so here we are on the freeway looking north, and then here we are on the freeway looking south. Um, I, you know, I said the word overpass, I, I probably shouldn't have even said that. I think the reality of an overpass at this location is. Is just not possible, given the grade differential. You need to go up and over the freeway and get to a height that, um, is not gonna be restrained, constrained by freight movement. Um, so if, if this was to ever be seriously considered, I think it's more of an underpass of the freeway, uh, than an overpass. Not, not that that's any easier, um, but I think if there is r- room for doing it, it's at an underpass level, not an overpass.
Oh, similar to the Port Amaro?
Yeah, it'd go under, like, it, it wouldn't be an interchange, though. It would just be an underpass, yeah. Well, Matt, you're preaching to the choir here.
We're, we're designing as we go.
Um, I, I didn't get any details. I know we've probably have, have reached maybe some sore, sore spots with the interchange itself. But, you know, I, Front Street and Boardman Avenue, I know there's been a lot of discussion re- recently with, um, potential improvements. Reality is none of that goes away. In fact, it gets, um, gets, it's needed even greater, even more, um, at some point down the road. So, um, traffic signal or roundabout at Boardman Avenue probably is, uh, if it's not already, um, close to being, um, justified. It's, um, not, not too far off in your future. Uh, the Front Street, um, uh, conversions of those to ride-in, ride-out. Um, again, that's, that's all, um, sort of absorbed into this analysis and reconfirmed, uh, through the, through the forecasting work that we've been doing. Through the forecasting work that we've been doing. Okay, well, um, I I've either um got your. Worrying you because I'm telling you what you already know, or I've got your um, got your uh adrenaline going and. And ready to get to work and solve these problems, so. Um, but I think more or less that's the um. Focus of what I also, what I had to share um this evening, um. Like I said, I've got all these maps and other things available if you wanted to go into them, but as far, oh, I should mention real quick, um, the public outreach, I'll show that up real quick. Um, uh, th- these are some pictures of some of the outreach efforts we did, the picture on the left is the open house that was had there at City Hall. Um, picture on.
Brenda, and there's uh, we know those people, yeah.
Few familiar faces in there, um, uh, the picture on the right uh was a unique effort that was um, um. Was helping um city staff, uh, we were able to get uh into the uh San Boardman Elementary Staff Break Room. And uh talk with staff.
It's my good idea what that picture was.
Yeah, as they came in, so.
It's frozen.
Yeah, so we got some good feedback from the teachers and faculty at the schools on, you know, how to maybe uh better. Um, serve and improve the transportation system to and from the schools, um, got a lot of great feedback, not just on the traffic. Conditions that it's, they experienced for fifteen minutes, two times a day. Um, but um how to make better sidewalk connections so that uh kids can walk um more safely to school. So a lot of great little nuggets that came out of of that outreach effort, um. This is just a quick summary of a mapping exercise, you you see on the table here, all these little stickies and notes, um. This is a screenshot of a web-based summary of all those um information, so uh Tom at ZAN had just kind of completed that. Summary uh this week, and um I believe this uh web interactive web um. Page is is gonna go live here at some point in the near future, so if you're interested on what does this little symbol mean, you can hover your mouse over it. And it'll bring up the comment that was provided by one of the attendees at our open house. Um, so this will be a a nice little summary of of all the feedback we received, um, none of it was very surprising to us. Um, but it was still um good to get that um comment and the reassurance of the concerns uh from the community. Um, uh, in general, we had ninety-seven uh unique comments that uh came back through a a survey. Um, that had been, um, or I'm sorry, ninety-seven people showed transferred the feedback at either of the community events or through the survey, so. Again, ninety seventy may not feel is 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 a large number, but um in my experience, it's typical. Um, uh, I I think the people that came out are the ones that uh really had some major concerns or just. Passionate about serving their community and making sure that that this planning effort is um as thorough as it can be. Um, a couple of things that stood out, um proving connections across I eighty-four, um, it's a priority for many. Uh, traffic congestion and delays, common barriers, and. Um, some key roads can be difficult to navigate at times due to traffic congestion, especially along Main Street, so. Um, lack of sidewalks is a barrier for walking, um. Kind of no surprise there, uh, lack of bike infrastructure is also a barrier to biking. Um, there's limited bus service, uh, at least that's the perception that people have, um, and it's, it's more unclear where stop locations are. Which leads to, um, you know, discouraging ridership. And then lastly, the traffic congestion around the elementary schools, uh, pick up and drop off times uh that popped up quite a bit, so. Okay, um, any questions on the outreach?
I'll just share for everybody's notice, uh, information here, we, uh, Stephanie and I have been working with, um. The new transit manager at the county, um, they are gonna be launching a new route for Boardman on March thirty first. It's the last week of March, I think he said thirty first. Um, and he will be making a presentation at the April Council meeting about that, um, we are working with them to get actual bus stop signs. At locations where stop, bus stops are going to be. Um, we're hoping that we can get through the kind of internal permitting process, so those can actually be up by the time they deploy that new route on March thirty first. Um, so there'll be an opportunity to then, uh, so Heather will wanna work with the chamber to kind of. Um, you know, get that information out as well, um, and he's changing, uh, he's taking a little bit different focus. Um, we just haven't seen the employment ridership that I think the initial push was for. So he's looking at, okay, if we're not getting it there, you know, what are our opportunities to. Provide more dedicated services that where we can get seniors to medical appointments into the store. Um, people who have limited access to transportation, so I I think the the focus is, what we need to do is get people on the buses. The end of the day, we need people on the buses, so we're trying to address those issues.
He's gonna come and be the speaker at the Senior Center.
Right.
On um the sixth of March. The first, the first Thursday of the month, and uh. You know, so I hope he, I hope we can get more than just the seniors there, I think we need to start really getting. If this is gonna be successful at all.
Yeah.
You know, because. He's gonna bring the bus and try to explain to us how to get on and off and.
Yeah, we we need more of those opportunities for people in the community.
Kind of advanced project to be able to get on a bus.
Well, I can't, I don't think I can step up that high.
Yeah, I, I don't know how I.
Blue for them.
Right.
That old. Gosh, I thought she'd.
Maybe the stretch of being able to step, the height of being able to step for a person who is senior citizens different than. A person who's twenty or fifty, or even ten.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're a little short legs.
Got extremes on both ends.
I'm two and I have to crawl up, or I'm. Seventy-two and I have to, yeah, okay, sorry, Matt, well, hi, Jeff, see your presentation here, let's, let's move the next steps.
I'm, I'm more or less done, uh, just real quick on next step, so um you and I are gonna be busy moving into. Uh, what we're calling the proposed solutions memo, so that's where we kind of go through and try and come up with projects to address the deficiencies and the gaps. And the operational challenges that we noted through the future forecasting efforts. Um, what does that look like? Well, we'll probably come back with a long list of projects, um, and we'll wash those projects through an evaluation matrix. Um, and try and come up with some prioritization um uh solutions for solving things, recognizing that we're gonna come up back with more projects than you. Reasonably can likely fund through your own capital um expenditures, and so, um. Uh, the prioritization of those projects will kind of be critical, um. You might be asking, why are we gonna put projects on this T S P that we can't pay for it, well. I I think it's, it's a recognition that you may not have the money to pay for them today, but. Things can happen in the future, grant money can become available, development can actually help you pay for a large chunk of these projects, um. And um, and and so, but that's all, you know, not technically foreseeable for for efforts like this. So we still include the projects on the list, evaluate them, and those that fall off uh due to some, some rationale. Um, that will be um decided at that point, but we'll come back, um, share that list with you all. Probably in another work session, um, I said April on here, my guess is that April might turn into May. Um, kind of came to as a shock to me earlier this week that February is over tomorrow for people who aren't paying attention and. Um, it felt like uh we just hit January a few weeks ago, so, um. Uh, time is marching fast on us here, and uh I think there's a, it's a pretty big lift to go uh identify these projects and evaluate them. Uh thoroughly, so, um, things might push to April, but we'll, or to May, but we'll strive for April at the moment. Any other questions for us? That's the end of what I wanted to share tonight, um, but happy to dive into anything else if it comes up.
Any questions? So just, just briefly, um, again, it's been a while since we've done something like this. Um, when we get to the actual adoption process, he talked about another kind of work session and 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 the project schedule, he kind of talked about the steps that were happening, so. Eventually, there will be kind of the opportunity for the, the, the pack will kind of move this along, and Heather, I believe you're on the T S P pack. You're not, I don't know who the planning commissioner is on the T S P. Can't remember, it sounds kind of familiar.
You've just been blessed.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
There's a list that tells.
You're on the parks one, yeah.
A housing one?
Maybe you are on the, I can't remember, but it, it's all posted on the website, anyway, um. Well, well, the the pack will continue to do its work, um, we will have another work session on on kind of the proposed projects. Those will get vetted with the pack to some degree as well, and eventually we'll get to the hearings process, we will notice the Department of Land Conservation Development. That we're actually moving forward, we'll provide them with the draft T S P. And then we'll move into kind of that final work session, that final conversation about this is the draft, this is the time. You know, if there's any gross errors, um, planning commission, city council, ODOT, community now is the time to speak up. Um, and then we'll move in, it'll be a planning commission hearing first, there will be at least one planning commission hearing and at least one city council hearing. That doesn't mean that comment or if something emerges that if there couldn't be a second hearing at uh within either body. Um, uh, the planning commission will make a recommendation to the council. Uh, hopefully, it will be a do adopt recommendation, cuz it'll be a good plan, um, it'll get to the council, you'll also hold up that. That formal public hearing, let me comment, and then we'll get to adoption. So, um, the T S P is one of many of the projects that we're working on. Um, it will have a lot of inputs, in fact, the um Matt had mentioned the development code changes. And of course, we're also working on a project to update our development code, so we probably will use that input to not. Adopt development code changes associated specifically with the T S P. But move those because the the adoption of the development code should be following on the heels of the adoption of the T S P. Within three to five months, so the timing should come in really close there, so. I I don't want to adopt changes to the development code, turn around and try to do it again in another three months, so. Um, we're gonna try to manage those processes in that way. I think another really key piece to all of this, um. I actually held a virtual meeting um with all of our contractor leads. About all of the projects that we're doing, and there is a lot of cross pollination. Between the conversations on the Parks Master Plan. And of some of the conversations with the T S P around walking, biking, hiking. Those kinds of not driving the car, but how do we get, if we're not driving, what's the alternative, we're riding a bike, we're walking. So it's interesting to see how those cross pollinations are happening and. And, um, you know, I think there'll be a point in time where it's like, oh, Matt, Nisa, here's some outcomes you need from the Parks Master Planning Process, or. Oh, just out, here's some things that we've learned in the T S P process and cross pollinating those. The Parks Master Plan will wrap up this summer, the T S P wraps up by Christmas, and then the development code will happen in the following. Late winter or it, well, probably more likely spring of twenty-six, so it's just so you kind of have a sense of the tunnel that we're in.
Well, and it's good, some of them, like you say, the park will wrap up ahead of some of our, some of our others that they will have an impact on.
Right. So, um, you know, I I will admit, I I didn't plan it that way, Karen, but it's kind of worked out that way.
Somehow life just works.
Sometimes life works out, so, yes. Anyway, I I thank you all for your time very much tonight, appreciate it very much.
Okay.
I, Matt, any final words for you? Isa, do you?
Isa said nothing.
I I gave Isa before this uh uh call an opportunity to present, and she said, I'll just take notes, so.
Oh, nice, I like it.
Well, thank you.
All right, so we're ready, jerk?
Yeah.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You know, I think we should, I think we should.